All right, so I'd like to call the CCSU board meeting here at the Essex Police Department on November seventeenth, two thousand fourteen, at one forty-five Maple Street, Essex Junction, six oh two. First thing is to have visitors or employees to be heard, and unfortunately we have no visitors at this time. So the next thing, I need to have a motion to move into executive session to finish our superintendent evaluation.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor of moving into executive session for superintendent evaluation?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. We are now in executive session. We are now out of executive session. So I need a motion to authorize the executive committee to sign off on the superintendent's evaluation for year two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say aye. Okay. Motion passes. Six zero. Okay, on to the next business. CCSU was, Central Offices presented with a financial management questionnaire.
Correct, and each of our boards, and the SU boards, are required through a statutory requirement to complete this questionnaire. So you will see, you will see this again at local board meetings. This is new to us, and with the work of Kathy Baron and Brent Geisler, they've completed this for you, and I hope that many questions you may have. There is an error on page two that, at the top of the page, we will be striking what's in the box by whom or comments. There's a five-year statutory requirement, so on page two, we're not required to have anything in that box, and so the answer is no, and the box should be empty.
Which box is that?
Top of the page two.
That you have said that?
Right, and that would be no.
Initially had yes on there, and we're describing it, and then we realized that that incident was over five years ago, so we changed the answer to no, but we forgot to strike the comments. So it's.
Oh, gotcha.
Is this an annual requirement?
It is. It might have been on the books last year, but nobody seemed to know about it. It came up at a VASBO meeting, and we were all educated on the fact that this is out there. We provided the actual questionnaire, which is on the state auditor's webpage.
Okay.
So we downloaded it, filled it out real quick, and just needs to be acknowledged by the SU board, and then I'll hand it out at each of the district boards.
Is this filed with the agency of education, or with the auditor?
That's a good question. I'm gonna have to find out. We hadn't gotten that far. Once I've got it, I'll figure out where it needs to go.
Okay.
Probably the auditor.
I would think.
Is that it?
I think so.
That was easy. Then on to fiscal year sixteen budget discussion.
Yes, that would be me. I only brought a couple hard copies, because I didn't think anybody really used one last time, but Marla, I think you needed one last time. Do you want a hard copy?
Yes, please.
This is, Grant, this is just the six pager, okay.
Oh yeah, this is bigger print.
Last time? I can't say anything, Ben was just trying to save us money. All right, so this is just six pages, because we looked at various options, and in order for me to refresh the slides, I would have had to know which option to kind of refresh the rest of them. So there's only six slides. Changes from the first draft, the one thing that we decided on was to reduce the budget by thirty thousand dollars. Twenty-five, going from fifty to twenty-five for retaining associate superintendent savings for things that might come up, like professional service requirements, that kind of thing. So we dropped it from fifty to twenty-five, and then we zeroed out the climate assessment tool for FY sixteen. So the various options that you're gonna see on here, I did a status quo, which was just the first draft budget that you already saw, and didn't make any changes, didn't reduce the thirty thousand, just for a point of reference. Then option number one was using the full thirty thousand dollar reduction to just reduce SU assessments. Option two was to apply fifty percent of the thirty thousand dollars to reduce SU assessments, and fifty percent we were gonna apply to increase the child nutrition subsidy, since we have a deficit there. Option three was to use the full amount, a hundred percent, toward the child nutrition subsidy. The part that I kind of took liberty with was this option three. I looked at this, and then I also reverted back to the old way of doing the assessment, which means, if you recall, the fund balance increased sixty-four thousand dollars from FY fifteen to FY sixteen. And in the first draft of the budget, I took that sixty-four thousand dollar increase, and I applied it all to the child nutrition subsidy. And I, instead of putting it all down at the bottom and applying it, applying it as a savings across everybody. So what I did in option three was I went back, and I did it the way I've done it in previous years, which is, instead of having the sixty-four thousand dollar additional fund balance up at child nutrition, I just put it down at the bottom line, along with every other local revenue, and recalculated it to see what that would look like. The other actions were to estimate a participation rate necessary for child nutrition to break even, and then look at outside placement history and projections, and then add the SU staffing slide. So what we're gonna spend the most time on is this slide, which is, so the status quo is exactly what we briefed last time. So those SU assessment percentages, or amounts and percentages by district is what you saw in October. So option one, if we took the thirty thousand dollars and just applied it using the same methodology, and reduced the SU assessment amounts, that's what you would get. So U forty-six, instead of, instead of their assessment being one million seven hundred and twenty thousand, it would be one hundred, one million seven hundred and three thousand. And then you can just follow it down. The big thing is the delta column. So you can see from last year, from fifteen to sixteen, U forty-six would have almost fifty-three thousand dollars less in assessment. EJ would be up almost eighty thousand dollars. Westford would be up three thousand two hundred dollars. And that compares to the status quo. So everybody has less of an assessment. Option two, if you did a fifty-fifty split, you can see that U forty-six would drop to a decrease of about forty-six thousand. EJ would go up to eighty-seven, almost eighty-eight. Westford, you can see there's not much of a difference in Westford. It goes from thirty-two forty-one to thirty-two sixty-eight. It's only twenty-seven dollars more if you were to do a fifty-fifty split. Option three is applying the whole hundred, or the whole three hundred thousand dollars to the child nutrition deficit.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand, I'm sorry. What did I say?
Three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand, yeah. Good clarification. The whole thirty thousand dollars straight to the child nutrition deficit. And you can see, the other thing is, it says allocation change. This is where, instead of applying the forty-six, or the sixty-four thousand dollars just to child nutrition and reducing the amount, I took that and just put it at the bottom line. And I know it's confusing to hear me say that, but let me just skip to this slide. Can I have to stand up, sorry? So the child nutrition subsidy is seventy-six thousand here. It's really sixty-four thousand dollars more than that, but I reduced it here, instead of adding to local revenues down here, which are allocated based on the percentages like there. So by taking that sixty-four thousand and applying it up there, that sixty-four thousand, EJ sees a benefit of fifty-five percent of the sixty-four thousand, U forty-six benefits forty-five percent of that. If I were to put it down here, instead of EJ getting fifty-four percent of that sixty-four thousand, they only see thirty-eight percent of that benefit if I do it this way. So that's the difference. So if I go back, that's why you see some more drastic changes here. You see, EJ goes way up, because they benefit less. Westford goes up a lot more than before, because they now get a share of that sixty-four, whereas before they weren't. So this is the, the amounts and the percentage change if you did the hundred percent to child nutrition with the allocation change. So you can look, you know, at your own district and see how that plays out in those three scenarios. And of course, as I was putting this together and reviewing the slides again, I realized that I really don't have an option that shows, I show a hundred percent reducing the SU, to reduce the SU, fifty-fifty split, and a hundred percent to child nutrition, but this is the only one where the allocation changed. And I thought you might wanna see in apples to apples of what this hundred percent would look like if I used the same allocation method as these other three. So it's not in your presentation, but this is a hundred percent to the child nutrition program, and applying that fund balance increase the same way I had in all the other cases. So for instance, Westford would go to thirty-two, thirty-three hundred dollars. EJ, instead of over a hundred thousand, would bring it down to ninety-six. U forty-six at thirty-nine. So I know that's a lot of different scenarios. I'm gonna leave this one up, since you already have the other four for you to kind of consider. After thinking about it a lot, if you were to ask me for my opinion, or my recommendation, I think I would go for this new option four, because we really do need to get that child nutrition subsidy, try to get it as close to being cleared as possible. This puts most of the money there. It still shows a decrease from the first draft, for everybody, I believe, because in the first draft, in the first draft, U forty-six was gonna go down thirty-five thousand six seventy-seven, now it's thirty-nine thousand. EJ was gonna go up ninety thousand seven hundred. Here they go up, but not as drastic as they could. Westford, instead of fifty-one hundred, is thirty-three hundred. So that was just my recommendation. I know that you're gonna wanna spend a lot of time thinking of the different, the different scenarios here and discuss it. The good news is, I think the dollar amount for the SU budget is set. It's just a matter of how we allocate it, and which option you wanna go for. So, yes.
How can there be a difference for Westford if you're applying it only to Essex Junction and U forty-six?
How could Westford's amount go down? Because the executive admin service cost was reduced by thirty thousand. So your number right there came down. Your percentage of the executive, or your, everybody's executive admin service amount came down by thirty thousand dollars.
Oh.
And everybody got that benefit.
So that's a different decision that we made.
Well, in every case, in every case, I think the decision was made to reduce the budget by thirty thousand, and so that's, that's a done deal. The only thing was how we were gonna apply the thirty thousand.
I guess, I'm really, really confused. How come Essex Junction has such a higher proportion? Did we owe more to the deficit or something?
Yeah, that, that didn't change from the first draft. Essex Junction had a huge increase. It's because Essex Junction is the one district that has a higher percentage of staff than last year, and they also have a higher percentage of computers than last year, because everybody else is kind of stable or decreasing. And in Essex Junction, we hired a new teacher, we went to one-to-one, or eat ADL, and so even back in October, the, well, as you can see here, even back in October, you had an, EJ had an increase of eight point four percent, and U forty-six was down. Westford, it was an increase of just over, it was just under three percent.
But it's funny how we went up under the fourth scenario, with that being going against the substance.
Um, under the, under the fourth scenario, um.
Which is?
Cause you're recommending the fourth scenario, right?
Mm-hmm, right.
Do you have the next slide? Second.
So, I think there's maybe a little bit of misunderstanding based on what we talked about last week, because I interpreted last week's discussion as what to do with the, with the fund balance of sixty-four, and how to allocate that, and not, not the reduction that's shown here.
Right.
So I don't know if that's where people are, are having a hard time understanding why we're talking about thirty versus.
No, I knew the thirty, cause that's all we talked about.
No, we talked about the fund balance. I think Mark's right. We talked, talked about applying some of the fund balance to the nutrition.
We didn't discuss how to allocate the thirty K though. So we kind of had half of the discussion, but not the second half.
I, my, I wrote my, my notes that night, and I, the action I took was it was gonna be a thirty thousand dollar cut.
Yes.
And we were just gonna have a scenario on how to collect that, and I had thirty thousand dollars, reduce SU assessment, fifteen K SU assessment, fifteen K child nutrition, thirty K to child nutrition.
Let's see, I think the discussion was around the sixty-four, because we were talking about the fact that you can use it toward the child nutrition deficit. That doesn't benefit Westford at all, and yet Westford took part in creating the sixty-four thousand.
On the other.
I mean, I can go back to the minutes.
Well, that's just what I'm looking at here, the minutes. Conclusion, drop placeholder for contracted services from fifty K to thirty K. Drop five K for climate survey in a non-administration year. Debate about how to use excess savings. I, I think you've reflected what's in the minutes here.
Excess savings could be your fund balance.
I, I don't, I don't know what to tell you. I took, I took notes, I thought I had it clear. I thought I even restated it during the meeting. I thought we were very clear on that, but I could be wrong, and the beauty of it is, I can open up a file, and you can do whatever you want. And you just tell me what numbers to click, and I'll click them.
We were talking the thirty thousand. We talked, we talked the full fund balance, but when we discussed the child nutrition and how, cause Grant gave us the option of cutting, and we asked Judy how she felt about that coming out. So when he gave the two numbers, it was thirty thousand, cause the other fund balance was left alone, the other.
Well, was it, Grant? What was done with the sixty-four, what is done with the sixty-four thousand in the scenarios that you're presenting?
In the status quo, in options one and two, and four, it's applied here. In, in option three, I took it from here and added it to the rest of the local revenues. And that's why in option three, you see Westford drop so much, more than the others.
I mean, and just to be clear, that this is a departure from any past practice?
The past practice would be that I would have taken that money that I reduced up here, and I would have left it down here with the rest of the local revenues. That's how I've always done it in the past.
So that the amount necessary to operate child nutrition would be in that line, and it would be divided by those percentages between Essex Junction and U forty-six?
Right. Because the amount that we were, in this scenario, the amount that we were going to submit as a subsidy to child nutrition was a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
And, and we're even feeling at this point in time that a hundred and forty may not be enough.
Correct, cause we're.
So if we're gonna show the true cost, we might be showing, say, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in that line, and dividing it just between EJ and U forty-six.
Right, and then.
And Westford would benefit from the reduction of having a surplus, which is, which is more keeping with past practice.
So, Westford uses the food program, right? And they pay a portion of the administrative services.
As far as the subsidy goes, the amount of the subsidy is only split between EJ and U forty-six at this point, because the idea was, when Westford joined food service that first year, we didn't see any change in loss. So the idea was, we don't track that by building, so we weren't really sure what the impact was gonna be when we brought Westford on. That first year, we didn't see any additional loss as a result of Westford, Westford coming in. So we didn't charge them. The deficit has gotten larger since that time, but Westford, up until this past year, has always had the highest participation rate as well. So the thinking was, the deficit is not being driven by Westford. And I would say that that's, you know, that's about as best of an analogy as I can make, is that it wasn't, Westford, adding Westford didn't cause a big increase into the, in the deficit that first year. So my assumption is, since they're still participa, their participation rate is still as high as it was, pretty much, and since it didn't cause an impact that first year, that they probably still aren't responsible for deficit. The other challenge is, I did try to see what it would look like if I did allocate part of that subsidy to Westford. But the allocation method I use looks at the total number of kids, the percent, or participation rates, and gross revenues, cause I can look at gross revenues by building, or by district. And whenever I did that, Westford was paying like twenty thousand dollars. So it wasn't, it, that assessment methodology, I would have had to revisit the assessment methodology in order to make it something that was reasonable. It didn't make sense using the same assessment methodology and trying to add Westford to the mix.
Is, is U forty-six contributing to forty-five percent of the deficit?
I don't know. I mean, there's, there's, that's the thing, you can't really tell, because, well, as, well, you, I'm sure you remember, we don't track costs by building. I mean, I can show what the revenues are by building, but we never tracked costs, broke down costs. And it would be a little tricky to try to do that, because we get so much benefit from high school employees doing food that gets shipped out to the junction and to Westford. So it'd be hard to figure out how much of an, you'd have to apportion salaries to try to figure out, you know, a fair cost for each location. So we just never have done that.
So you're saying status quo and option one, the only option that's different is the fourth one, you've changed the methodology.
Yeah, this one here. I changed that method, the methodology on this one, to go back to the past practice, which is, all of the local revenues gets assigned, bottom line. And the reason why I messed with it in the first place, and departed from the prior practice, was because we were looking at so much of an increase in child nutrition subsidy, and since, I couldn't figure out a way to try to, you know, assess part of the cost to Westford, so I figured, well, maybe one of the things I can do is at least not assess the cost to Westford, but assess the additional revenue to U forty-six and EJ.
So on the surface, I see this as kind of a newer issue, because we haven't really dealt with this before. The, the concept of larger and larger deficits is, is kind of a newer phenomenon, because of the different cost structures we've seen over the last couple of years. So it doesn't surprise me that we're having this conversation. But if we're projecting that this is going to continue, then I wanna be cautious that we do it right, because any kind of change to allocation that results in big swings one way or the other is most likely not going to be met with open arms by the districts who are getting hit, and, you know, vice versa. So going forward, which of these scenarios, assuming that we continue to keep similar losses for the food service enterprise, which of these makes most sense to you in a multi-year type of thinking, versus just this year?
Well, next year, I think I would probably revert back to the assessment methodology we've always used. But also next year, I don't think we'll be dealing with an increased fund balance revenue, so it wouldn't be as much of a player next year, anyway.
And you're saying that's option three?
The, the allocation method used here for option three is what I would use next year, unless the board gave me a different direction.
Do you see Westford coming on into the child nutrition costs?
I'm kind of hamstrung on that, because I don't know what the expenses are. So, I mean, I think, I think next year, before we get into crunching budgets, you know, before the October meeting, whenever we talk about budget guidance in like September, I think that's whenever I would be showing you if there's some new data that maybe should impact the way that you should tell me to do the assessment. For instance, if, during this year, if Westford's participation started dropping dramatically, well, next year, in September, during budget guidance, I might say, you know, judging by the fact that we, we see participation dropping, it really does seem like we should revisit whether Westford should pay. I mean, but I don't know. I don't know if that will happen or not. As a matter of fact, I, I don't know how we're gonna end this year for food service either. Maybe we will do a little better than we're projecting. So I think I would come to you in September and ask you for guidance on changing the allocation of assessment, you know, the assessment methodology, before I go into doing the budget for October.
Mike.
Go ahead.
I would just like to say again with my, Andre had on, you know, it wasn't an easy decision for Westford to decide to join the food service. And part of the context was that we were told we would not, and granted, it wasn't promised forever, but we were told we would not have to share in the subsidy, cause that was a big concern, particularly to some board members. So I think that's a big, that's a piece of what I'm struggling with. You know, in addition to the fact that I do feel like both the sixty-four thousand and the thirty thousand are generated by all three districts, not just two.
And you're right, I did say that Westford wouldn't have to pay that first year, or in the foreseeable future, but it has been several years now. I don't know, three, four, four years? And at the time, Westford was paying a three thousand dollar subsidy to a contractor. But because it was only three thousand, that's why whenever I ran using the methodology, and Westford came up having to pay twenty thousand dollars, that was not even, that wasn't even gonna start. So that's why I said, forget that, that's not gonna work. I mean, if it had, if that methodology had calculated out, and if Westford would have gotten like a, anywhere between zero and three thousand dollars, I would have said, well, you know, that's close to what you were paying before, anyway. But, but it just didn't work that way. And that's why I initially went.
But, I mean, if, if the other two districts weren't ponying up a hundred and forty thousand dollars in subsidy, there wouldn't be a food service for Westford to contract with.
Right, Westford would have to go back to.
Me, go back to Abby.
Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to do a source selection and, and go back to a contracted service, correct.
I mean, we're, we're, you know, I, I think when you start talking about, you know, it was a huge number, I think that's, because we're just kind of used to seeing a sixty thousand or seventy thousand dollar cost at the high school level. I think that's because we're just kind of used to seeing a sixty thousand or seventy thousand dollar cost at the high school level. I mean, but, but without paying that, without paying for the subsidy, there isn't an operation for any of us.
Well, and that's kind of why I was looking at this option four as kind of a, as kind of a, um, a happy medium, in a way. I mean, it still is like nineteen hundred dollars less for Westford, eighteen hundred dollars less for Westford. U forty-six still sees, actually sees a bigger decrease than before. And EJ has a slightly higher cost, but it's not, you know, a hundred and, a hundred and six, like it would be for option three here. I mean, I know that at least one EJ board member said, expressed that even though it would be an increase for EJ, it seemed to be the thing to, that needed to be done. But, to hit EJ with a hundred and six thousand dollars, or a ten percent SU increase in one year, it just seemed kind of high. That's why I went back to that scenario.
You say eighteen hundred grand, but if we were doing what we usually do, it's costing Westford thirty-eight, thirty-nine hundred. We were doing option three, which is what we would normally do.
Yes, and I don't have a vote, so that's why they're all up there for you to talk about.
Well, we could stay with status quo and deal with this issue throughout this year.
In what way?
And leave the budget with the thirty thousand in there for the superintendent and for projects, and then deal with this fund balance discussion this year.
We have, we have to create a budget. I mean, making three thousand may not seem like a lot, but it's a lot in Westford's budget, and we.
That's why I'm saying, like, the first budget that Grant gave us was status quo.
But, the first budget still has the, the new methodology of reducing the hundred and forty thousand dollars needed in food service subsidy, reducing that by the sixty-four thousand dollars of additional fund balance.
The status quo?
Yes.
How is that sixty-four thousand in there?
And so does option one, two, and four. Like I said, my thinking was, next year, I would revert back to the, to the same way we've been doing it in the past, because I wouldn't, I wouldn't be looking at a big increase in fund balance revenue, and I wouldn't be looking at, hopefully, a big increase in child nutrition subsidy. It would be just level. So, at that point, I would go back to the old methodology.
Brian, now that you've said that, though, we, we had a fund balance of, what, sixty-four thousand the last time in the budget?
No, it was an increase of sixty-four thousand from the prior year. So, the fund balance is, let me find it. The fund balance is eighty thousand dollars this year. It was only sixteen thousand in FY fifteen, so the increase is sixty-four.
So, that's what you applied over to this year's.
The increase here is what I applied to the, to offset the child nutrition subsidy.
And then the thirty thousand came from more cuts.
Right, and those were costs in executive admin services, which, reduced, this number is now two hundred and ninety thousand, four forty-two, instead of three twenty. This is the assessment detail slide that matches the October presentation, I didn't redo this one.
The sta-, okay, the status quo doesn't match.
Well, this, this chart here would still match this, which is, by status quo, I mean, the October budget presentation without the thirty thousand reduction. This is just exactly the, what I showed you last month.
Right, status quo.
Right.
It would leave the thirty thousand out, and we could discuss it throughout the coming year. It's there.
Yeah, but I don't think, I mean, if, if we were to do that, then Westford would still be seeing this increase of fifty-one hundred dollars because of the way I allocated the sixty-four. So, I don't think that's, I don't think that's a.
So, in option three, they're actually in better shape, and it brings down the child nutrition.
I think.
Deficit, correct?
When it does to EJ.
One of the things that, for, for my brain, I'm trying to capture is, is actually a status quo back to previous methodology. So, that we would see the, we would see this work all the way through on assessments with that, um, with the status quo and methodology. So, there would be a, there would be that fair share of local revenue of, I guess it would be eighty-nine thousand plus another sixty-four thousand.
So, let's just do that real quick for you.
So, as a baseline, student, student numbers increased in EJ.
Teacher.
Decreased in.
Teacher, teacher.
Oh, so, teacher numbers, but also student numbers increased in EJ, correct?
Yeah.
And then, it went down in U forty-six?
It's teacher numbers.
And it went down in Westford?
We added teachers, we've added, I, I don't have a problem with having to pay our fair portion of assessment, because we did have to increase, we had an increase of students. So, that's not, my biggest concern is starting work on the deficit with the food program, that.
So, if the methodology remained the same, child nutrition subsidy of one hundred and forty was divided between EJ and U forty-six, as we, as the percentages, and the entire fund balance was allocated based upon the assessment total percentages, that's what we'd have, that's status quo methodology.
This is the October budget with the thirty thousand dollar expense still in there.
Oh, okay.
The thirty thousand dollar expense is still in there, and I just took the sixty-four thousand and put it at the bottom line, so that everybody benefited from the sixty-four thousand instead of just the two districts.
Right.
So, yeah, so, instead of, instead of U forty-six being down almost thirty-six thousand, they would actually be down almost forty, forty-two thousand, actually. EJ would have been a hundred and one thousand dollar increase instead of ninety-one thousand. Westford would have been a thirteen hundred dollar increase instead of fifty-one hundred dollar increase.
And I think, I mean, this is very helpful, it's also amazing that you got the Zoom to be exactly the size of the screen like that. Just saying. But, I think that, I mean, there, for me, a crossroads is coming in which to be, to be using the food service requires supporting the food service. And that now, unfortunately, has a reality of a subsidy. So, that seems to, because we, we haven't, this goes back to an old methodology in which Westford didn't use the food service?
This would, yeah, this was the methodology we used before Westford came on board with Food Service, yeah.
But, at the same time, I don't know.
If we, if we were to make that change, though, is this the right, is this the right order of operations? Because, because then our community may demand that we seek a, a different option. Maybe one that's more cost beneficial to our school, because of our budget situation this last year and presumably this year?
So, so you're.
How do we react to it is, I guess, my concern. I don't want to react by leaving, because I think our students are enjoying a high level of nutrition, and we have a good deal of, well, you know, input into the process, because we do get to speak with the, with Bob Clifford, because we do understand. So, the way it works out and how we find ourselves here, I think, is where, where I struggle a little bit with it.
So, if, if you wanted, you know, wh-, what's the other option? The other option is, the community could ask you to seek alternative food service, which you know, four or five years ago, required three thousand dollars in a contracted service.
Yeah, but it might not, the prices have gotten up since then, so we don't, kids paying more for lunch now, so we don't know that it would require a subsidy.
So, I'd say the FDA changes recently, we saw considerably pushed our cost points up.
And twelve ninety-four, you're not going to find a contracted service less than that contribution to the subsidy.
If you went back into your source data where you just did the sixty-four, if you subtract the thirty out of executive admin, would we be basically, would that give us the actual assessment?
So, subtract the thirty thousand?
Yeah, doesn't that kind of give us to the point of what?
This is where, since it all was here, I just subtract the thirty thousand.
This gets us to, to, to data tonight. So, with the, with the same status quo methodology we've used in the past, and the thirty thousand dollar reduction that we talked about in, from the last meeting, these would be the assessments.
If we apply all of that to the assessments.
Then, and not put anything towards the deficit.
So, right, well, there's a hundred and forty thousand that's just going to the subsidy, there's no additional, thirty, thirty thousand dollars going to that.
Well, the six, where's the sixty-four?
The sixty-four is all split up through districts.
The way it usually is.
Correct. So, this would be old methodology, completely with the catching up to what the decision process was between the two meetings. And it would potentially then give us the next year to study food service and Westford's participation in food service, and how we should maybe update some of the algorithms that are used. Because I remember myself, this is the one that's participation per building, per student. It, it's really. It's complex, and it's really variable. Where we like to have us, an assessment be much more concrete and stable, this food service one is less than that.
So, we're, we're running about a hundred thousand dollar deficit per calendar year?
Hundred and twenty was the number?
Yeah, it's, well, it's, it's hard to say, because it's been so different, because the, the, the scenario has changed so much with the, with the USDA changing. This past year, in FY, in FY thirteen, or, I'm sorry, in FY fourteen, we lost a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
And so, the total deficit now is, what, two twenty-five?
Two twenty-five as of the end of FY fourteen.
So, if we go this scenario, we haven't touched the nutrition or the food service issue at all?
No, there's a hundred and.
A hundred and forty of it.
In the budget.
Which would mean, basically.
In the budget that was proposed.
This would give a hundred and forty toward the child nutrition subsidy. But, since we're losing nearly that much, you're basically not digging into the deficit. You're, you're basically keeping it at the same level, if you just leave it at a hundred and forty.
Which is an improvement over last year.
Yeah, if we, like, if we lose a hundred and, we're, we're projecting to lose a hundred and twenty thousand this year, and this would be a hundred and forty going in, so it would be twenty thousand dollars better. So, like, two hundred thousand in the hole, instead of two hundred and twenty-five or whatever.
That would be, yes, it's an improvement over last year.
You're supposed to say, yes or no?
Sir!
So, we need a recommendation.
Now, do you want me to, I assume, if I, if I go back in here? And if I increase this by fifteen? To do the fifty-fifty split? So, this is doing the fifty-fifty split, but reverting back to the old methodology.
So, that's option two, but the old methodology.
It would be, it would be option two, but reverting back to putting all of the savings at the bottom, instead of applying the saving, or the additional fund balance to child nutrition. It's applying at the bottom line with everything else.
Well, I think from EJ's perspective, we need to, we need to lower the, you know, to, to get that, that number down, that deficit. So, if we're applying some now, it's got to be applied at some point, it's got to.
Yeah.
We can keep putting it off, but eventually, we got to pay for it.
I know.
And so, we can pay a little bit now.
And U forty-six is carrying the load of the burden, which I, if I was a taxpayer in the town of Essex, I gotta say I wouldn't be too happy with Prudential Committee right now, you know, knowing that we've got this deficit sitting out there. Because you said Union Forty-Six makes up.
No, no, what I'm saying is, it would be hard to figure out how to allocate costs at the building level, because EJ utilizes some, some food gets prepared at the high school and sent out. So, that's why it's hard to determine costs.
Oh, no, 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 I'm talking about, at our last budget meeting, you, you had said, I asked, if we run this deficit, where's this two hundred and twenty-five thousand, and you said, U forty-six is carrying the deficit.
As far as cash flow, yes.
Yes.
You're correct, yes.
And, and U forty-six is, you know, shares the burden of running a deficit, so it, I mean, it, it's okay, especially if we're addressing it.
I'd feel better for putting something towards it myself.
Well, this option puts fifteen. One fifty-five.
One fifty-five, right. So, that definitely does start chipping away, at least.
And it's, the Prudential Committee were the ones that take the, the, you know, we're gonna, if we had more staff, we had more students, that's why our assessment's up. I mean, we ha-, we can explain it.
It's a problem we kind of wish we had.
Yeah, so from, from our perspective, we're, we're, this is, this works for me.
Yes, I'll compromise and go with this one.
I'm just smiling, because I gave four options, and we're selecting five.
Well, it's, that's, that's, that's how it's going.
That's the nature of, of collaboration.
Can I just get a up-down from everybody, as far as this particular scenario on the board? Up, up, good, good, all right.
Okay, so.
Got your answer, Grant?
So, it's a fifty-fifty split of the thirty thousand, and it's reverting to the old methodology with the, all of the local revenues being applied at the bottom line. Got it. Okay, thank you very much, I know that was challenging, there's a lot of moving parts.
Yes, well, thank you for having all that information available to us, so.
I would just say, Grant, I think you're right. I think we need to start this discussion much earlier, next year, possibly even before September.
I personally need a better understanding of the food service and the breakdowns, and, you know, I'd like to know how much work it would be to cost out. I mean, I'd like to know how much it's costing, the actual cost that it's costing our schools. That we might have to come up with a solution, I don't know what it would be. But, to me, we've got to come, we've got to go back to somehow, if it's going to be that much loss every year, then just start budgeting for that, or make the program break even again somehow, some way.
Yeah, and the, the, if, if they stop changing the rules on us and the requirements, then maybe we'd see kind of what the requir-, what, what we actually settle in at. But, okay, so that's that. I did have a few other slides, just because you had asked for some information, if I need this to go away. Speaking of child nutrition, there were some what-ifs, like, what would the participation rate need to be? I mean, obviously, on these things, I had to do some, some assumptions. So, what I did was, I looked at FY thirteen and fourteen participation. I determined what I thought would be a realistic participation goal. I didn't want to say, oh, we can get up to eighty percent participation, that's not going to happen. So, in the green. So in the green, this green line is what I set a goal to be for breakfast and for lunch. I calculated the increased number of meals if we hit that participation rate and multiplied it by the FY14 pricing, just because I was looking to see what it would take to break even in FY14. So if breakfast participation was at 25% instead of just under 18, if lunch was at 57 instead of almost 50, then we would have had $142,000 more in revenue. The deficit was 135. So that should have gotten us pretty close, but I know that participation might have dropped if we had done something like that. Some state and federal reimbursements might have been a little higher because we would have had higher participation, of course. But just to give you a ballpark, that green line is kind of what I'm calculating is if we had been there. I think Martha asked, I think, what we would have had to charge, looking at it from that perspective. And if I were to just look at the number of meals we served for lunch, if I were to, if I would have charged $3.35 instead of $2.75, that would have pretty much broke us even. That did lead somebody to a follow-up question of why don't we increase prices above $2.75? And the answer to that is already did. In FY15, we're up to $2.95. And so we'll be looking in the next couple of months to see what we need to bump that up to like 16. But for right now, we're at $2.95. So that was just kind of some kind of what-if analysis there.
And isn't, isn't there a rule of thumb that Bob uses that a dime is a 5%?
I was, I was thinking it was 1%.
Yeah, maybe a nickel is 1%.
Reduction in participation.
Yeah, if you increase the price by a nickel, you'll see a 1% reduction in participation. It's just kind of a rough guesstimate.
So we are, we are about five minutes over. So any questions that can be asked offline, I encourage you to do so. So do you need tentative approval?
Yes, which I think you had kind of gotten.
That's what I was saying, yeah.
If you don't mind formalizing that, that would be fantastic. So.
So who will make motion that we, for the purpose of dividing the SU budget to, to the local budgets, that we divide the $30,000 in savings we've identified from the original proposal, 50% to the nutrition subsidy and 50% to reduce SU assessments and that the fund balance be allocated in the normal way? Is that what I'm going to say?
Yeah, that's fine. If somebody wants to throw a dollar amount in there, I would say that you're approving an SU budget of $3,066,025.
I'll put that on my.
366425?
3066025.
Um, second.
Second, aye. Marla? Any other discussion on that? No? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passed. 6-0.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, so we got that one on the way. Next item up is the consent agenda, which is to approve warrants and the meeting minutes from October 27, 2014. I have motion for approval of consent agenda. Actually, I can make that motion to approve the consent agenda, as I just said what it is.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And future agenda items?
Food service.
Okay, keep that on the front of everybody's minds as we move forward, okay?
So hopefully we're going to be talking about the work superintendent that needs assessment for the superintendent's work plan for FY16.
Uh huh. Correct.
We need to have a motion on the next CCSU agenda. We don't have a motion approving this year's annual work plan of the superintendent when I went back and looked at the minutes. So we do need that as a future agenda item. Because that's what we evaluate superintendent on.
So we need an action item on the next meeting to approve the annual work plan.
Don't we also have to have the formative assessment in written form?
Yes.
For, the formative assessment for FY15 has to be in written form. So that's going to need to be on that agenda.
That's correct. Got it? Okay, anything else? We are carrying over all next agenda items from each previous meeting, so no need to. Right, and, and the, the, the ones that were already been identified are still listed on your, your org notes. Okay, if there's nothing else, I'd like to adjourn meeting of the CCSU board for tonight. We are adjourned. We are adjourned at 7:08. Thank you.